Flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Davis Reinhardt.
Here.
Bud Starker.
Present.
Joyce J.
Here.
Kristy Davis.
She should be.
Oh, that's right, she's gonna be late. Mike Stites.
Here.
Joe Demott.
Here.
And Tracy Langworthy.
Here.
And I received word today that Mr. Pond is not going to be here tonight.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of November 26, 2012?
Show move.
Second.
You have a motion to approve the minutes, it was seconded by Mr. Starker and Mr. Reinhardt, please poll the council.
Motion carries six to two. Six to zero.
There is no proclamations or ceremonies. The next item on the agenda is citizens' right to speak. Citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes, others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. So please step forward to the podium and please spell your last name and give us your city or your address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. I wanted to thank all of you and the whole City of Wheat Ridge staff for partnering with the Ridge at 38 Leadership Committee on the recent holiday celebration on Ridge at 38. On Sunday, December 2nd, we had over fifteen hundred people there on the streets of Ridge at 38, and it was just a wonderful gathering and collection of people and energy. And I saw many of you there, and so thanks for your support. I especially wanted to thank all the city directors and staff and city manager Patrick Goff, who made the tree lighting happen. The tree was fantastic, the citizens oohed, aahed, and loved it, and still do, and it was just really great to see everybody work hard to get this celebration moved from the rec center where it had had some success, but moved to Ridge at 38 where it had even greater success, and just truly a wonderful community event, so we thank you very much for your support.
Britta.
Quite frankly, I was very pleasantly shocked at the amount of people that I was...it was great, but I was actually really surprised that we had that many of us.
And thanks to the higher powers for great weather.
Hello, council, my name is Jesse Hill, live at 2995 Chase Street, and I was excited to hear that the council's considering the idea of recording and broadcasting study sessions. I'd recommend, you know, more than that, council, you know, other boards and commissions. While the city's website is very functional, it unfortunately is unable to be viewed on smartphones and tablets, and nowadays, it's really, that's where most people go for information, rather than on their computers. These are selling multiple times more than a personal computer these days, and especially for the next generation out there that involve citizens and involve leaders out there, they're gonna be using these. So I'd like to get ahead of the curve and, you know, recommend even a modest and low-cost solution of even using a simple camera we could get, and tripod, and uploading those videos to YouTube or another site, and I personally would be happy to donate such a camera and tripod to the city if you guys would be willing to, I guess, take that on as a role to get out there so we can communicate to our citizens. Thank you for your time.
Well, Mr. Hill, would you spell your last name for the record?
Hill, H-I-L-L.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of council, Mr. Mayor, my name is Ted Hyde, the last name is spelled H-E-Y-D. I'm the planning consultant for Livewell Wheat Ridge, and wanted to share a quick announcement with you tonight, as well as any members of the community who are watching on Channel 8. With input received from several community members, Livewell Wheat Ridge is currently circulating a 38th Avenue endorsement letter. And it's a one-page letter, which is actually in electronic form, that can be completed and submitted by people via email, and it highlights the economic health and community-building benefits that are being realized through the ongoing implementation of the Corridor Plan. Through this letter campaign, Livewell Wheat Ridge and its coalition partners want to build up as much awareness and support around the Corridor Plan as possible. And we're doing this for a variety of reasons. First of all, we feel there are a number of businesses and organizations and individuals out there who still really support the plan and would like to register their support formally in some way. We also feel that there are a number who are still actually not aware of the plan or its components, and the exciting improvements that have already been made out there, and we want to give them an avenue to really sign on to the campaign, invite them to register their support, and by doing so, really further promote the buzz surrounding what's happening on West 38th. Second is, we really want to ensure that 38th continues to function as a good place for existing businesses, as well as to be a promising and exciting place for new businesses to invest. Of course, we want to foster and create a good environment for local jobs. Building on infrastructure improvements this past summer, we want to help further create and promote walking, biking, and transit usage as a safe and inviting modes for commuting, visiting, shopping, and going to school. We want to help support some of the exciting community-building activities, Ms. Fisher mentioned one of them, and events that have taken place in this last year. The tree lighting was incredible, I was there, I had to wait twenty-five minutes to get on the hayride, and when I was in Wheat Ridge Cyclory, they actually had to close the door with still about fifty people waiting outside, it was really exceptional. Overall, it's our hope as a coalition that a broad demonstration of community support in Wheat Ridge is going to encourage the city to continue to invest in the implementation of this plan in the months and the years to come. So quickly, version one of the endorsement letter was already created and circulated to businesses and organizations. We're now circulating what is version two of this letter, and the difference is that version two welcomes endorsements from individuals throughout the Wheat Ridge community. For those in the audience or watching on Channel 8, please contact me at tedhyd@gmail.com, or if you wish to call me by phone, it's 303-953-8470. To date, a combination of twenty-two businesses, organizations, and individuals have signed on, and we'll be back in a few months to give you an update on this ongoing campaign. In closing, we very much want to thank you for your leadership and your support to really create a healthy, economically vibrant, and socially dynamic downtown in Wheat Ridge. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Howard, please spell your last name for the record.
Howard Jadinger, I live at 6845 West 36th Place.
Could you spell your last name for the record, please?
Jadinger.
Spell it, please. J-A...
J-A-I-D-I-N-G-E-R.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Wheat Ridge since 1952. I'm a business owner in Wheat Ridge, was one of the original members, or the one of the members of the committee to incorporate the City of Wheat Ridge. Lived in my residence on 36th Place, about a block and a half south of 38th since nineteen sixty-seven, and I can't tell you how happy I am with the redevelopment of 38th Avenue, what's going on there. As a business owner, I've had some chances to interact and network with some of the owners down there. I'm having more fun on 38th than I had since I went to junior high school over there in that area. And I just can tell you that now the wife and I feel comfortable and safe walking on 38th. We would have never thought of doing that before with our dog and rabid walkers. Another interesting thing that I've noticed in my neighborhood is that we've had four young couples just move in, their first homes are starting to redo their homes and things. I've gotten to know these kids, and every one of them are so happy that 38th has been redesigned. They say now I can ride my bicycles down there, we can walk safely. So I'm encouraged that people are learning about that, and I...hopefully in the future, this will just continue to improve and be a great area for all of us. So just wanted to thank those of you who have supported that, appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Thank you. So the next...hello, Molly.
Hi, my name is Molly Hanson with Livewell Wheat Ridge. Can I yield my three minutes to Ted Hyde again?
Sure.
Thanks very much. Again, my last name is Hyde, and that's spelled H-E-Y-D. I'm the planning consultant for Livewell Wheat Ridge, and thank you again for your time. I just wanted to give you all a quick update on the 38th Avenue walking audit, which we conducted this past August, out on West 38th, really between Uplum and the Highlands West Apartments. In all, twenty-five people participated in this community exercise. We had Wheat Ridge residents, a planning commissioner, staff from Community Development and Public Works, and Wheat Ridge 2020, and city planners from other jurisdictions, as well as public health professionals. The primary purpose of this audit was to help support the city in its ongoing implementation of the Corridor Plan, which does include a lot of pieces about increasing, enhancing the pedestrian environment out there. More specifically, we led this exercise as an on-the-ground, kind of kick-the-tires, firsthand assessment of the pedestrian environment out there, following the several improvements that were made this past summer. In striving to make 38th a healthy, economically vibrant, and safe Main Street, we feel that pedestrian experience out there is really a key part of it. So covering three separate portions of the avenue, we broke into three small groups between Vance and Kendall, and participants provided valuable feedback based on five specific questions. Now, I'm happy to share a summarized two-page set of recommendations that the participants offered, and I'll hand these out after my remarks. I think you've each received a full copy of the report from Bruce Roome, but I'll be happy to share the summary when I'm done. I think overall, it's fair to say that the participants of the exercise really experienced a mixed bag out there. Almost universally, people spoke really highly of that section between Vance and High Court, a very strong pedestrian environment with a lot of amenities. However, it was that section between High Court down to Pierce where people really noted room for improvements. So I invite you to take, please, a look at the summary of recommendations and comments when you can. It's our hope that as the city continues with 38th Avenue implementation, the recommendations will be of help in some way. We will be conducting another walking audit in 2013, and I'm certainly open to any suggestions you may have as members of council or Mr. Mayor of what so-called hotspots in the community where you feel a walking audit could be beneficial. We're open to your ideas, and if you don't already have it, my email address is in the report. So just want to thank you very much again for considering the recommendations and the comments. I think they're really insightful, and I did try to boil it down into just a page and a half, so we'll pass these out now.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
With respect to our absent council member, I'd like to pull item three.
Is there a motion to approve item three, is there a second?
I'm sorry, you were asking to pull it?
Pull it.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion to pull item three, to come back at a later date, right, Mr. Demott? Please poll the council on the motion to pull item number three.
Motion carries seven, zero.
I'm sorry, I should have asked this, is the motion to bring it back the next...
Next available.
Next available, okay, thank you.
So item three is pulled from the agenda. Move on to consent agenda, Mr. Demott.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Consent agenda, number 1A, motion to adopt the 2013 City Council meeting calendar. Item 1B, resolution 58-2012, approving an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Wheat Ridge and the City of Lakewood authorizing payment of $68,900 for the use of Lakewood Police Department crime lab, crime scene services. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve items 1A and 1B.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on items 1A and 1B? Please poll the council.
Mr. Rent, thank you.
Sorry.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Now, thank you, the next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinance is on second reading. Item two is council bill number 28-2012, I'm gonna open the public hearing, Ms. Jay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council bill number 282012, an ordinance approving the vacation, the vacation, sounds odd, of sidewalk and street scape easements adjacent to 5995 West 38th Avenue. At issue, in conjunction with the redevelopment of property at 5995 West 38th Avenue, current right-of-way easement areas are being dedicated to the city. Existing sidewalk and street scape easements are now redundant. Is the motion in order?
Now, we're in a public hearing, so would the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1529.
Thank you, do we have any staff presentation beyond the executive summary?
No, Your Honor.
Do we have anybody here from the public to speak, item number two? Any council discussion or questions before I close the public hearing? I'm gonna close the public hearing, a motion's in order.
I move to approve council bill number 28-2012, an ordinance approving the vacation of sidewalk and street scape easements adjacent to 5995 West 38th Avenue, and that it take effect upon adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Starker, discussion on the main motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you. Item three, next item on the agenda, decisions, resolutions, and motions, item three was pulled until January. Item four, council member Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, it's with great pleasure that I introduce motion to award ITB 1226 32nd Avenue widening project to Concrete Works of Colorado, Lafayette, Colorado, in the amount of $4,607,76.34. In March 2011, the city was awarded a federal grant for widening project on 32nd Avenue from Brom Court to Wright Court through the Denver Regional Council of Government Transportation Improvement Program. The project includes a reconstruction of a portion of 32nd Avenue with additional turn lanes at key intersections to improve the capacity and therefore reduce traffic congestion. On November 7th, 2012, seven bids were received, all but one bid met the bid requirement. The most responsive and responsible bidder was Concrete Works of Colorado, Lafayette, Colorado, in the amount of $4,607,76.34. Staff has evaluated qualifications, experience, references, and recommended award to Concrete Works of Colorado. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
On behalf of the citizens of Wheat Ridge and District 3 out there, and the surrounding area, I move to award ITB 1226 32nd Avenue widening project to Concrete Works of Colorado, Lafayette, Colorado, in the amount of $4,607,76.34, and to approve a contingency amount of $460,000, with the Director of Public Works being authorized to issue change orders up to a total contract in contingency amount of $5,067,76.34.
Is there a second?
Second.
The motion for approval is seconded by Mr. Demott. Questions on the motion? Please poll the council.
Motion carries seven, zero.
Thank you, that concludes our...oh, Mike, there's a second part.
I further move to charge $14,000 to the Capital Investment Fund and deposit $14,000 into Public Art Fund.
Second.
Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries seven, zero. Motion carries seven zero. I already had that typed in as one motion, so I guess I'll have to split it up.
Well, and Mr. Demont's second of the second motion. Yeah, both of them, okay. I'll move on to city managers' matters?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll leave the details to council member Jay. But we had a tour tonight at Lutheran Hospital, their new senior behavioral health program. It's a very nice program, did you want to speak to that?
About something else.
Okay. Lutheran has a new center in their hospital to provide services to seniors sixty-five and older with behavioral health issues and any other medical issues. So they had a tour tonight, and they hope to have at least eight beds filled when they open, and up to twenty-two beds. So it's a needed service, I believe, for our community and all communities. So if you have a chance to go see it, you may want to do that. I'd also like to wish happy holidays to Wheat Ridge citizens, this is our last regular meeting before the holidays, and thank the mayor, council, and staff for a very productive year, I felt. And I look forward to the many good things to come to Wheat Ridge in two thousand thirteen.
Thank you. Mr. Noel?
Thanks, just one item, pardon me, getting over the first cold of the season, I guess. Just one item, I know that the charter requirements on recusal conflicts of interest in voting were raised at the study session that I was not at, at the prior council study session last week. And there's been some email on that same subject. And what I'm intending to do is to put together a little memo for council. There are three charter provisions that are kind of interrelated, that set out the rules for what you do when there's a conflict of interest, how you identify it, what you do about that, and how that affects voting on the council. And there's some parts and pieces to it that I think would benefit from a short memo from me, and so I'm going to do that and get it to you. If after you've read it, you have individual questions, as is always the case, whether you get a memo from me or not, you're welcome to call, and I urge you to, always before a meeting, that way I can help you get ready for that. If it appears as if, based upon the number of questions I get, some kind of study session would be appropriate on that, I'll come back at a council meeting and suggest that. But let's see how the memo does in terms of addressing your questions. And when you get it, please feel free to call me, and I can elaborate. Thanks very much, and happy holidays to everyone.
Thank you. City clerks' matters?
I know I'll see you folks again next week at the study session, but I wanted to wish you Merry Christmas, and all the faithful viewers out there in Channel Eight TV land, Merry Christmas.
Mr. Reinhardt?
I just, I guess everybody will probably weigh in on this, but I also thought that turnout on Thirty-Eighth Avenue for the lighting was wonderful, and I'm glad to see the community supporting that event. And I'm also glad to see Concrete Works coming on to both Thirty-Second and Youngfield, even if it isn't District Three. And there's nothing we can do to move it elsewhere, it's still a good thing. And, you know, Concrete Works is a firm I've seen in bids for over a decade now, and I look forward to having them working in the city. Thank you.
Mr. Demont?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you. I'd also like to, me and my family attended the Christmas tree lighting, and it was very exciting to see a bunch of new people coming and visiting our shops in Wheat Ridge that may have not have done that before, and being welcomed with smores and crafts. And those who got the opportunity to have their picture with Santa or write the hayride. We didn't, we were too late, the door was shut on us for Santa. But it was really an exciting evening, and I am thankful for the concrete work on Thirty-Second because I work on the other side of that. It'll be miserable for a little bit, but in the end, it'll be better. Thank you.
Ms. Davis?
Thank you. First of all, I apologize for being late, my day job ran too far into the evening. But I just wanted to wish everybody a happy holiday, and also the tree lighting, the tree's actually beautiful. But one comment I want to make, and I don't know if everyone else noticed it, but it's nice to see in all the neighborhoods how much homes and the spirit of the holidays, you can see it throughout the neighborhoods, and I think more so than it used to be, so happy holidays.
Thank you. Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. I should have said something when we were discussing Thirty-Second, but the concrete or the street out there, you know, forty-five years ago when they put I-70 in, they knew they blew it, but we'll be back and fix that, well, that was forty-five years ago, and I'm tickled pink that we're finally starting to get it going out there, and that's great. I was at the tree lighting ceremony, and I tell you, it was fantastic to see that many people on Thirty-Eighth other than Halloween was really, really quite good. Would be a great time to relocate your home or business to Wheat Ridge. If you need help, check with one of us or staff, we'd be happy to help you. Positive thing, you know, I've heard some really sad stories, there's a lot of people hurting out there. So if you could, you know, take a family, make sure that your neighbors are fed, and, you know, with Christmas coming and particular things, but there really are. I'm still surprised at that, there's just a lot of people hurting, so please try to help them out. And as always, please try to find it and buy it in Wheat Ridge, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Starker?
Just a moment to say thank you for all of the support that we've had on Thirty-Eighth Avenue, and to wish all of our citizens a very warm and happy Christmas and New Years.
Ms. Jay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This will never outdo Mike, but we have a wonderful program going on in Wheat Ridge right now. It's called Shop and Win, and it's put on by the Wheat Ridge Business Association. And there's a lot of Christmas shopping needs to be done, and the cry is do it in Wheat Ridge. As a matter of fact, it helps your city, and this time, it comes in with an award with prizes. If you spend anywhere five dollars or more, anywhere, anywhere in Wheat Ridge, you can buy tires, you can buy groceries, you can buy ice cream, you can get your hair done, whatever. Spend five dollars, and that puts you eligible to join in this wonderful group of prizes being offered by Wheat Ridge Business Association. The awards will be presented in January. So you spend five dollars or more, keep track of it, there's actually a form that you can fill out, which you can get online through Wheat Ridge Business Association, I'll give you that in a minute. Get eight of those on there, heck, I can do that in two days. And then that makes you eligible for the drawing, and there are some really wonderful prizes. They've done this before, but I guess this year it's grand. They wouldn't give me a clue as to what they were, but I guess there's some great prizes. But anyway, go to the internet and go WheatRidgeBiz, WheatRidgeBiz, and it says B-I-Z, WheatRidgeBiz dot com, and you can get a form. Or you can go without the form and then fill it in later. Helps to keep the receipts, but they'll even trust your honesty in saying, I shopped there and I spent this much. So that's all, give it a plug.
I also wanted to thank the organizations that helped put the lighting ceremony together in the past. It's usually been just the City of Wheat Ridge at City Hall or at the rec center. This year, we had a number of organizations helping putting it together, which was great. Wanted to thank Patrick and Joyce Manwaring for flipping the switch for me. I was ill that night, had the flu, so I couldn't make it, so Patrick, thanks for doing that for me, and I'll be there next year, hopefully, and, or this year, I guess, next year, maybe not. I guess I won't be there next year. And also wanted to thank the businesses that have been helping at the high school with the careers exploration class, we've been having students job shadow. I've been of tires helped in the past, the Pietras, Gunsmoke, and Larson Ski and Sport have all been active, having students go job shadow at their location for the afternoon through the careers exploration class, so it's been working out really good. So I want to thank those businesses and all the other businesses in the City of Wheat Ridge. I also wanted to give a hat off to Tip Top Tree in the City of Wheat Ridge. They've been around for a while, and they've been helping some businesses out and some residents out in the area that have trees that are dead, but they're not necessarily able to pay. So they've been actually doing a lot of work for no charge to trim and get cut down dead trees and branches on private properties. I appreciate the fact that they've been working with those residents and helping out in this time of the season. So I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a Happy New Year, so we're adjourned.
I'm sorry, I noticed today there's some really nice signs on the bus shelters on Forty-Fourth Avenue with the big forty-four thing. Who paid, where'd that come from, and who paid for that?
The city did, actually, the city's working with the businesses on Forty-Fourth Avenue. It kind of started with Steve Art, our Economic Development Manager, and the owner of the, I always forget the name of this...
Swiss Flowers.
Swiss Flowers. And actually, the owner of Swiss Flowers originally put a flower together and paid for it, and the city... I told Steve to reimburse her for that because of the amount of money the city's putting in Thirty-Eighth. We also want to help the businesses on Forty-Fourth Avenue, too, so. And they came up with the emblem to put on the bus shelters, and we're looking, doing the same thing on Thirty-Eighth Avenue.
They look really nice.
We're adjourned.